Like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present, like to welcome you all that are here tonight and those watching Channel 56. I've asked Councilman Hatch to give us the invocation tonight and the pledge by Councilwoman Wilson, if you'd like to please just stand and join us.
For kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come before thee tonight at the Sholo City Council meeting. We ask a blessing be upon this community of Sholo and please watch over our first responders and those veterans that are here and have taken part in their ceremony this week. We thank thee for the many blessings that we have in this community and when ye ask that thou will be with us, watch over us, help us tonight to be swift in mind in convincing in our arguments. We say this in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, Damian.
Amen.
And please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Hatch, Councilwoman Wilson, appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is called to the public. Seeing not a soul in here that's not business related, we'll move on to item number six, special events. COVID-19 update by Navajo County Health Department Supervisor Seymour.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager and staff. Happy to be with us tonight. Tonight I have Janelle Lynn and Katrina Jenkins. And I'm going to embarrass Janelle here for a minute, okay?
Are they standing so far away from you or are they afraid of you or something?
We're socially distancing here, you know.
Okay.
Janelle Lynn is an Arizona native, born in Sholo, Arizona. She was raised in Concho on a little cattle ranch. It was not uncommon for her to spend her days out gathering cows and her family from dawn until dusk. She has two sisters and two brothers. When Janelle was 11, she moved to Missouri. It was here that she graduated from high school, graduated nursing school and started her family. She has three biological children and two stepsons. She moved back to Arizona to be close to her family and it's where she met the love of her life, her husband, Justin. Janelle loves to spend time watching her beautiful grandchildren traveling, cooking and baking and also working on pandemics and spending time with her horse Dixie when she's not at work, that is. While in Missouri, Janelle worked as an RN in the labor and delivery unit and then transferred to a school nurse so that she could spend more time with her children. She was able to write and obtain several grants to improve the school services and secure funding. Once she left Missouri and moved back to Arizona, she applied as a public health nurse and Navajo County Public Health Service Director in 2002. She provided direct services to the residents of Navajo County. Janelle instantly gained the respect from her coworkers as the public health team. It was after her former supervisor resigned and relocated that she applied as a nursing supervisor. During this time, she worked closely with Dr. Hartsner, taking health district in a very positive direction, securing additional grant funding to expand services to our community, establishing strong community partnerships, developing and enhancing policies and implementing a system allowing us to build health insurances for nursing services. Janelle served under Mary Tyler Herring as her deputy director, expanding her knowledge on the program outside of the nursing team. And then after she resumed her role as nursing supervisor, she went on to pursue her bachelor's in nursing from Grand Canyon University. We are excited to have Janelle as our new public health director and look forward to her leading our team. She's an excellent core values, fiscal transparency, she's honest, open communications, and most of all, she leads by example. And we just recently made her the new health director for our county and we're excited to hear from her and she's done a super job. So, Janelle, great to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. I'm kind of impressed, how do you find all that stuff?
Well, I have my ways, okay?
That makes me kind of nervous. Good morning or good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for inviting us to be here today. So we're just going to provide you with a little COVID update. My piece is more, not as exciting as Kat's because I'm just going to give you some statistics. I sent my slideshow in.
It's right in front of you, Janelle, and also that mouse right there will help you control it.
Look, I don't even need this, I love it.
And we all have it in front of us right on our screens.
So these are some of our case counts as of this morning. Some of, most of our data, we work the off reservation cases, our public health nurses do. So the tribal entities report to us weekly, so some of our tribal data is not accurate because they report on Wednesdays, but that's listed in the right-hand side. So combined cases, tribal and non-trivial off, in Navajo County this morning were 14,793. 6,332 of those were worked by our Navajo County Public Health Nurses. We have had, we are currently monitoring 148 households, that means households that we have isolated due to either being infected or a direct contact of a COVID case. We have released 5,880 households from isolation. We've had 160 deceased citizens off reservation since the start of the outbreak and 457 non-trivial related hospitalizations. And 530 of our cases have linked directly to school.
Now, I have a quick question. Just when, when somebody's positive and they're in our hospital here and they have to be transported to the valley and we unfortunately, they pass away down there, where is that counted in this? Is it up here or down there?
So all of your case counts are based on residency, so they look at your physical address. For homeowners who have dual addresses, they ask them which is their primary residence and that's where the case counts get assigned, the death rates get assigned, hospitalizations, they're all based on your residential.
So if they're on vacation somewhere or somewhere else, but they live here but got COVID there and they stayed there and they deceased, oh, thank you.
So this is an Epi curve of our cases since the start of the outbreak. So these range from January 1st to present. So as you'll see in the very beginning, we had an initial spike, those were our first few cases that were identified up on the Navajo Nation and then things weren't kind of calmly. These are bi-week, so each of these are bi-week throughout the outbreak. And so you'll see when we got to the early summer months, end of May, start of June, we started up our first spike. That peaked in about July and came down and then we had a pretty quiet early fall. Once school resumed back into session, we started seeing some gatherings for different holidays, starting with Halloween and moving on through the Christmas holiday, we started to see the peak. And we peaked in late December, early January. At the top of our peak for Navajo County, we had 410 cases reported one week for our highest case counts. We, the climb was much slower than the first one, it took longer to get there, but it was a higher spike and then it kind of leveled off and stayed for a while. But we have really been enjoying the repeat, reprieve the last few weeks. So this is kind of hard to see over on the graphic, but on the 17th of January for Navajo County, the rates per 100,000 were 457 per 100,000 residents. Three days ago, two days ago, our rate was eight per 100,000, so that's a significant drop-off in the last month. So that makes us really happy. We're based on our rates per 100,000, we're in minimal spread of infection. Our positivity rate is still at 21.1%, but that data can be a little misgiving. Positivity rates also factor in how many people are being tested. So if you don't have very many people being tested, but you're still identifying positives, it can give you kind of a false sense that you have a high positivity rate, so we look more at the rate for 100,000. This week, we are still seeing COVID-like illness in the hospitals. Our current hospital inpatient admission rate for Navajo County is 7.4% and our emergency department visits are 4.6%. There's some talk in the news lately of variant strains. There are three variant strains that have been identified of COVID. The first is the South African strain. 17 cases of that strain have been identified in the United States across eight states, but none in Arizona so far. We have a strain out of Brazil, they've had three identified cases in the U.S. within two states. Once again, none yet in Arizona. And the United Kingdom strain, they have had five cases identified in Arizona. Four of those have been in Maricopa County, one in La Paz County, but we are watching that closely and samples are being serotyped out. So we feel confident that if that strain's identified in our county, we would identify it quickly. And there are 17 cases in the U.S. across eight states. Currently, the vaccines we're using in Navajo County are mRNA vaccines, Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, and they are all continuing to date to show efficacy against these variant strains, but that's something they're constantly watching and that we're trying to keep a close eye on. So here's just some ideas, to give you an idea of what our vaccine distribution looks like in Arizona, as a whole, they've had about 11% of people start the vaccine series and only about 3% have completed the two-dose series. We're actually a little ahead of the Arizona rates, we're a little closer to 16%. We have administered 16,484 doses in Navajo County and we have 12,062 of those are first doses, 4,410 are people who've completed their series. And this data is off-reservation data, the tribes don't report this to us, so this is just our off-reservation data. So we're pleased that even though we have had shortages in vaccine, we're still a little above the state average in distributing vaccine.
I got another one for you. So back to that slide, I've heard rumors anywhere from 30 to 45 days in between the dose, is that true? Because if, according to that slide, if it takes too long, it is, what's the, how long before the second dose?
We're distributing Moderna vaccine in Navajo County off reservation and it's 28 days between doses. And so what we're doing is to ensure second doses, the allocations come to the health department every week and then we look at our different facility partners, we look at how many doses have they been able to successfully push out? How many doses do they have in their current inventory? And then we match their second doses for four weeks prior first and then whatever's left after we give everybody their second dose allocations, then we give, distribute out for first doses so that we can make sure that we can ensure those second doses is how we've been allocating vaccine.
It just seemed like a pretty widespread or whatever that was, so the second doses are coming up for some of those, obviously.
We're only in our third week of second doses, so we'll really, I think, start to see those numbers climbing because as we're administering second doses, we're also starting new people on first.
Thank you.
So this slide just gives you some, a picture of Navajo County in relation to vaccine distribution. So you can see on the curve there, we're steadily increasing the rate at which we're able to administer vaccine. There's been some discussion in the state, are we serving our minority populations? And in Navajo County, we're almost dead on, with that, we're right at about a 50/50% in serving our minority populations, so that's good. We are currently in Tier 1B, so we have Tier 1A, which is your healthcare workers open, and then Tier 1B is also open, which is your 65 and older, people who work in public service or essential workers and things like that. So we are still not having enough vaccine to totally wrap up with Tier 1B, but we are moving that direction and hoping within the next month or so that we can move into Tier 1C. Any other questions on my piece and then I'll turn it over to Kat?
I have one.
Go ahead, Vice.
You want me to?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So do you have data segregated out by community? So for Sholo?
Some of it we do, yes. So we can give you case counts, we can give you the positivity rates, but like I said, that, depending what you're using it for, that it's not always highly reliable data, but yes, a lot of it, we do have it broken out by zip code.
Do you have the vaccination rates based on community?
We don't have them based on zip code yet, we just have them based on the facility where they were administered.
And we have a high volume of community members that struggle to get registered and so can you tell us what the best route is for them to take to be registered and receive their vaccination?
One of the things is, that's the problem, is the lack of vaccine. And what we've done here in Navajo County and we've really encouraged our facility partners to do is to not schedule an appointment unless you know you have a dose. Some counties really heavily scheduled appointments and now they're having to go back and cancel those appointments, which is even more frustrating to people. So a lot of it is just there's not appointments available because we don't schedule them until we know how many doses we're getting next week and then we open up that many appointments a lot. So many weeks, we've only gotten 400 doses of vaccine. So that's not many, especially when you're considering second doses into that 400. So the appointments are just limited, period. So we're using a link, a registration link, and the reason we're using that is because Navajo County has to be able to account for every single dose of vaccine that we distribute for our facility partners. Well, we know once it gets in their hands and gets into their electronic health record, that's going to be very challenging to do. So this system allowed us to do that, but we are the first to admit it is not the greatest system. It was built during COVID response and so we're constantly asking them to make tweaks and changes, some of those they've been able to accommodate, but that's the main reason behind using that system. But a lot of the frustration is once they get in, there's just not an appointment to book and that is because there's not enough vaccine to open those appointments. We have over the last two weeks seen some increase in our allocations, we've received 2,000 doses last week and the week before. Those do have to account for second doses as well, but that's still the best allocations we've gotten since this started. So now that we have that, a lot of the facilities have started waiting lists and we are calling people and then getting them an appointment once those open or we're trying to really serve, especially our elderly or those who don't have access to technology through that means. And then we have, Kat's going to talk to you about some of the other things that we have in place to serve them and some of the other organizations that we're partnering with to try to help because we do that as a.
I just have one more question, Don, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Can you tell us what the waste rate for Navajo County is?
We, most of our facilities have a zero wastage. In fact, most of our facilities, these are multi-dose vials, so there are some syringes that have less airspace in the needle, meaning you can get an extra dose out of that vial. We're actually finding that that's pretty, pretty common, that we're actually able to get 11 doses out of a vial instead of 10. So that's helped us a little bit, you know, that's 10 extra doses for every case, so that's helpful, but most of our facilities have had zero wastage. We do have one facility that early on, we were seeing some wastage, so we went and provided some education with them and since then, they've been having zero wastage.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Are you guys also doing testing or just vaccine?
The public health is not doing testing. We, early on, were inundated with the contact tracing and we needed our nursing staff for that. Plus, our medical director did not want us to get into the avenue of testing because then if someone didn't have a primary care provider, then we were in a situation where he kind of had to become their primary care provider, which was an awkward position for public health. So we worked with our facility partners and let them do the testing piece and we focused on contact tracing and vaccine and response.
And congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
For your promotion.
Thank you for your input on everything tonight. It's been, I think a lot of people's been waiting for something like that around here. Where can we go or what can we do to help you try to get this vaccine in? Do we need to get with Governor Ducey? Do we need to go higher? What can we do to help?
Any voices to the legislature and the governor cannot hurt us. That's what I say.
You know, and I've got both my shots, so you know, the second shot, I was a little worried if I was going to get it or not, but if it wasn't for a couple of people at the hospital helping, you know, I don't think I would have got it, but you know, it's just, it's good. We have a lot of people questioning it and how come and why, so I think now, since people can hear this on TV and see everything else, maybe we can get some phone calls to the governor's office and get things moving.
The more voices we have, the more likely we are to be heard.
Thank you very much.
We put forward a request and we're requesting 3,000 to 4,000 doses a week, so, but we're finally consistently, the last two weeks, we'll get our allocation tomorrow or the next day for next week, so we'll see if that trend continues, but, and then we are also preparing, we are asking that you share the message to please go to the facility where you got your first dose for dose two, because we're allocating those doses to that facility and then that way we don't have one facility who gets overwhelmed or comes up short or, and your dose is allocated and accounted for if you return where you got your first one.
Thank you very much, Janelle.
Thanks. Any other question? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, it's been a while since I've been in front of you, so thank you for having us. I'm here to talk to you about how we're going to distribute when we get to the next tier, which is tier two, and get to that general public piece. We call that a pod or point of dispensing. We've practiced pods for 12 years, I believe, at least. Pods are where we do that drive-through shot in the arm for your flu. Typically, it's at a fire station and you get to drive through the fire station bay and get the shot in the arm and off you go. It's a very simple process. It's one that's being practiced all over the state now. We're unique where we've actually practiced this and rehearsed this for years. Not many other counties have been that fortunate to be able to claim that. So we're planning for and preparing for those pods. We have eight pod sites throughout the county off of the reservation, including Holrick Winslow here, we have actually two in Sholo, one at Summit, one at Timber Mesa. We're also planning for secondary alternatives, if you will, because you always have a backup plan. So as Janelle said, we have a distinct lack of vaccine, so sometimes it's easier to consolidate what we do get and potentially do fewer pods and in smaller, less locations than spread it out and only have a few shots to be able to give. We are working with upwards of 15, I believe, healthcare providers to do these vaccines. They've all offered to assist with the pods when it comes to that time. So like Janelle said, we're hoping within the next month or two, we'll get to that stage where we are open to the general public, but we're just not there yet. And again, when we get, we're hoping to see a much more consistent allotment each week before we can open up the pods. We also partner with our public safety folks. The law enforcement gentlemen and ladies provide security, volunteers provide traffic control, and then our firefighters also provide assistance, obviously with their facilities, but also the medics with giving the shots and things like that. So we have a lot of partners in this and we could not do this without them, so big thank you to all of them. As you can see, like I said, on the top diagram, we mapped this out. We have the plans in place with those partners, we review it every year during flu time and we practice it. So we're very confident at this point, once we do get to that, we're going to be able to execute very efficiently. Let's see, I think I already talked about most of this, but we will continue to require the appointments because of the limit of vaccine. It's not like we have an abundance to just have everybody drive-through, drive-through, drive-through. So that's really what I have to say. Is there any questions that I can add?
Thank you. Katrina, does anybody got any questions?
Of course.
No, I can't believe it.
So, you know, we, like you said, we practiced the pod example for quite a few years. In this circumstance, with the flu, we haven't typically required an appointment for the flu vaccine. So under this example, how are we handling those individuals that come through the drive-through without an appointment?
So unfortunately, without an appointment, they will not be able to get a vaccine because those doses are limited and they are spoken for. We only open up enough appointments for the number of vaccines that we have. So again, we are encouraging everyone to go to our website for the vaccine COVID registration and get registered for an appointment. We understand that it's a struggle. One of the things I neglected to talk about with some of our other partners, our libraries have been phenomenal. We have three libraries, including the Sholo library here, that have opened their doors to citizens to come use their computers and also assist them getting those appointments. And some of our seniors don't want email and that's been part of the process. To get onto the system, you have to have an email, it's required, there's no way around it. So I could not do this without those libraries. We've also got the Pine Top Lakeside Library and the Snowflake Taylor Library helping, as well as the Re Center that also opened up their doors and their computer lab. So we have four independent, if you will, helpers out there giving, opening their doors for citizens to get that help. We're working with them, I check on them about every other week, get them some masks because again, they're trying to be COVID-conscious and be secure in how they're helping. So yeah, it is helpful.
So were they helping them establish an email address or are they using a general email address?
No, we can't use a general email because that email is specific to you because your reminders and information about your vaccine, second appointment comes to you. So you do have to have an individual email address. So they are helping people get a Gmail, Yahoo, an AOL, something free that they don't have to pay for and that they can easily cancel once they're done. If they don't want that email address any longer, they can say, I don't want that anymore and cancel. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions?
You know, I just want to get back to what both you guys have been saying, but knowing that your hangup is way above us and everything else, I just wanted, and I have to ask, have we, before, have we wrote a letter and had city council and members sign it and send it off to the governor or representatives or anybody else? Maybe that's something we can look at doing, so I definitely want to thank you for your help and hopefully we can help push it along a little bit.
I'll just answer that. We have sent letters unidally as different counties, different associations, we've had calls in with our senators and so they're trying to get 300,000 doses allocated to Arizona, which we'll get our share, but right now with the storms and things, they're having hiccups all the way through, but we have made a concerted effort to try to get more doses.
You know, I think, and I think we could probably tag along with you to help you out too, just, you know.
Any other questions?
I just want to tell both of Janelle and Katrina, thank you publicly. I get an opportunity to kind of sit in my back corner office there and get, and it really is a front row seat to Janelle and to Katrina and seeing what they do and to see the perspective of it, you know, this happened almost a year ago where it was kind of thrust upon you two ladies as well as your entire team. And I know that they have a phenomenal team of people who work for them, from our public health nurses to our public outreach to, you know, like Tanya Baker and her team and they just do a great job of, you know, sometimes people don't realize how much, how quickly they have to react. I mean, there's times where Governor Ducey's having a press conference and the information, we're getting that information right then and then we have to develop protocols and we have to develop, you know, responses almost instantaneous and to see Janelle and Katrina and that team work together has been really phenomenal. I really, we are in really safe hands as far as our public health goes and I'm, you know, I'm excited to see Janelle, that I've had the opportunity in a different capacity to see the health district kind of grow and morph and all of that and the one constant stabilizing factor throughout the time that I've been at the county has been Janelle Lynn and her team of nurses. And so I'm excited that you've been made the full-time director and that there's not an interim there anymore and that that title's not there, it's well-deserved and well-placed and I'm excited to continue to work with her. We're, the citizens of Sholo are in good hands with both you and your teams.
Absolutely, ditto on that. Thank you, Janelle and Katrina, very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Seymour, we appreciate it very much for coming tonight. I hope you go to other council meetings and spread the word because that way we don't have to answer questions we don't know about, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
All righty, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We don't have anything to remove off that, do we? I'll look for a motion for accept the consent calendar. Got a motion in a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, moving on to new business, consideration of award or purchase of floor replacement at the Sholo City Campus Gym. Mr. Cupp? Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The consent calendar went pretty quick, so.
The smallest one I've ever seen.
I also forgot my spectacle, so I'm going to have to hold this up so I can read it. I apologize for that.
Brought some.
The 2020 and 2021 budgets included $55,000 for replacing the carpet in the carpet gym. Staff received a quote from Continental Flooring, the state bid contract flooring vendor. The quote was for an amount of approximately $28,000. This work included furnishing installing approximately 6,200 square feet of Mohawk broadloom carpet with court striping, removing old carpet and installing new cob base. At the October 2020 city council retreat, council members expressed concerns about the carpet and whether it was the appropriate material to use in the facility. Because of the concerns expressed by the council, staff prepared additional information which compared four options for flooring, carpet, vinyl, sport court, traditional hardwood gym flooring and painted concrete subfloor. This information was presented in the study session on November 23rd, 2020. The council directed staff to seek information for additional options. Flooring information was updated to include an additional quote for hardwood flooring. In the previous presentation, the wood flooring was estimated between 110 and 120,000 dollars. This actual quoted cost was 113,000. In addition to this, staff also added two additional flooring systems to the options, both at, both at council's request. The first additional option was for interlocking rubber panels. The second was a poured urethane floor. The urethane floor is called a padded pore floor. The surface is constructed with the self leveling urethane material poured over a rubber pad. At a study, the study session held on January 19th, 2021, discussion was held to consider six types of flooring in 10 categories. Cost, maintenance, warranty, moisture sensitivity, comfort. America's, and that's comfort is the temperature, ADA access, force reduction, which is how much the floor gives underfoot, ball bounce, noise and uses. And there were actually several uses. After considering the information presented, presented, the council directed staff to obtain updated quotes for two flooring system, roll vinyl, sport court and padded pore. We actually received two quotes for the padded floor. The difference between the core, the quotes was the pad thickness. One was seven millimeter compared to the other, which was nine millimeter. But the cost difference was only about $2,000 and the thicker pad is going to provide an upgraded system that has higher force reduction and better ball bounce. So we went with the nine millimeter on the padded pore. A spreadsheet is included with the information packets comparing the two finalist flooring systems. The most notable difference are differences are price, warranty and general usability over multiple uses. The padded pore cost is 122,353.38 compared to 72,717.68 for the roll vinyl. The padded pore warranty is 30 years compared to 15 for roll vinyl. And pore floor is also more versatile in multiple uses and is much less susceptible to tearing, gouging and wear. If you take a look at those costs and divide them by the warranted lifespan, the roll vinyl is about $4,800 a year and the padded pore is about $4,000 a year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilwoman Also.
Thank you, Mr. Yes. Cup, for the information you give us, I, I can't say enough for, you know, breaking everything down and helping us out for, for this floor. So I, you know, overlooking, over both of them and everything else, it's, to me, I like, I like with the 30-year warranty compared to the 15, even though if I go to a 15, it's cheaper, but in 15 years, I'll be paying it twice double. So it'll be about another 50,000 on top of that, plus whatever materials gone up and after the 15 years. So I, I definitely like the way you put everything together. You, you showed us everything that we needed to, to know. And I just, I like the, I like the price and I think that 30-year one will probably really help us out real good. So thank you very much.
I have a question. So the restocking fee that we have paid 3,250, is that included?
That is not included, and I apologize for that in here. So the actual cost will add 3325, I believe, is the real number on that. It's here on the spreadsheet, 32. No, that's not correct. The, the vendor clarified that the 3250 was not correct. It's slightly higher than that, 3225, I think.
And once again, that's the same vendor that we're going to use, right?
Yeah.
Restocking fee, we can't convince him that if he doesn't waive that restocking fee, we're going to go somewhere else? I mean, why wouldn't he? For that kind of money?
Well, he is state bid contract, so.
I heard that already.
It, we couldn't go anywhere else, but I will certainly ask him the question. He's certainly used to answering my phone calls.
It makes business sense to me.
We talk a lot.
And our, our sound panels are also additional, right?
Right, the sound panels are additional. We actually have budget for sand, sound panels in this year's budget. So we don't have, I think I was saying a $10,000 estimate. We have about 6,000 this year. So we will go ahead and, and get $6,000 worth of those installed. See how they work. If, if we think we need more, then we can budget for more as well.
Mr. Cup, do we have any gyms up here that have used the padded pore method that we've looked at and how they work up here in the mountains?
I'm not sure. There was some indication that the schools had a padded floor, pore floor in a multi-purpose room or cafeteria or something.
I think the old junior high gym had it. That's where they had that rubber flooring type where they brought mules in and stuff like that and played basketball. And it lasted for, I believe that even said quite a few years.
No, is this though, I'm, I'm assuming this is a different material, though, that I would imagine that it's evolved in the last 30 years as far as the traction and stuff. Is that true?
Yeah, it has. And, and it actually, there's some smaller colleges even are using this type of floor. It's usually the 12-millimeter pad, but the nine-millimeter pad is basically what is a high school equivalent type of playing surface.
So this padded pore, just because I know when we first started talking about this, even when we were talking carpet, we were concerned about cracks in the floor. What, what is that going to do as far as warranty if we have cracks? I'm sure they're going to prep it, but we're going to move up here. We're in clay. So what, what, is that covered under their kind of warranty if the floor does crack underneath or how's that?
I, I don't think if, if it's a structural issue, I don't think it would be covered. However, just like you said, they're going to do, they're going to do prep in there. There's probably some cracks that we have to fill. And as long as that building and that slab has been in place, it's probably just about done moving.
You would think. You said we are going to do, we are or they are?
They are. That's, that's included in their price.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Hatch.
I was just wondering if, if you have done an assessment of the building overall to find out what we're going to do and how permanent it will be through the lifespan of what's left of the building. Where do we stand on that?
I can't tell you what the lifespan of the building is. It's, it's been there for a long time. It's a CMU block building, so.
But you see what I'm trying to get at is we have something over our head that's protecting what we're putting on in the floor.
I mean, the roof's good. It's a block building. It's well maintained. I think it's fine. It'll stand as longer than most of us will be here, I'm afraid.
The roof is good and all.
Councilman Adams.
I'm making sure I understand this. The padded pore is the floor that's in the junior, the old high school, the cafeteria was?
I can't say. That's, that's something I think that came from someone here on the council, said they thought it was there.
I just asked where we had one, so.
That would, that wasn't fun to play basketball on, right?
Well, that was 25 years ago too, that we're hoping.
And, and I don't know. There may not be any padding in it. It may be a urethane coated concrete slab. And I really don't know, so I can't answer that.
That's why I was, I was wondering too, because I remember that the, this, the school district has since put a wood flooring on top of that. And I, but when I was in high school, that subsurface there was very difficult to play basketball on. It was, it didn't provide any traction.
And your, your right, Councilman Hatch, I mean, that, that building's 35 to 40 years old. I, I kind of brought that question up today too. But that building's, it's doing well, that's for sure. It's, and it gets used. If it was sitting there not getting used, I think we'd have concern. But it's getting well used, well maintained. Somebody's in there almost every day cleaning or whatever, so.
Has the roof been inspected? Has, has the roof been inspected?
It, it seems to be functioning. I don't know if we've, we've had people up on the roof and, and nobody's found anything. Anytime that we get a leak or anything, I don't know if we've even had any leaks, but if we get leaks in any of our buildings, we get them repaired immediately, so.
Councilman Clark, you have another?
Yeah, I have one more question. So is the, the 30-year warranty, it's really only as good as the company in existence, right? Like they're the ones who's warning it. So like if 10 years from now, they go belly up, we don't have a warranty anymore. Is that kind of?
Probably the same as a one-year warranty. It's.
So, so 25 years from now, if this company's not in existence, we really don't have a warranty, is what you're saying?
I, I don't even know how to answer that question. I would say, no, if the company's not here, then the warranty wouldn't be.
Well, you would think the person that made the product might stand behind it.
But it's the installer is the war, through the war, is the one who's providing the warranty. It's not the, there's not a manufacturing.
This floor is being installed by the manufacturer. So they manufacture the materials and do the installation.
Okay.
Councilman Also.
You know, and I, compared to the first one, there's more, we have more cracks or finger joints or joints coming in compared to the pore and pad. We only have probably what, one joint or two?
It's, no, it's seamless.
It's always seamless. So at least it will be a lot easier, where things won't pop up on us and everything else if, if that does happen. So, okay, thank you. That's what I was just asking about.
Anybody else have any questions?
So Bill, do you have any experience with the, let me find the correct terminology here. So we have the, the padded pore and we have the sport court, right? Do you have any experience with the sport court as far as?
The only experience I have, right, the only experience I have is what the Mountain Christian School has that installed. And I went up, I did a tour and, and several staff went up and took a look at it. I mean, the, the seams, you can see where the seams are. And, and I think staff's biggest concern about that is it is a softer floor. And if we have a, an event like a gun show where folks are dragging tables around in there, stuff, there's a chance it could get gouged or, or torn. So it's not as robust as the padded pore floor.
Any other questions? If not, I will look for a motion. Almar? Councilman, Councilman Also.
I moved to award a purchase of, of padded pore flooring for the city campus gym to continental flooring in the mountain not to exceed 122,353.38 and approve the associated budget transfers.
Got a motion in a second? Somebody?
Let's check in it.
Second by Councilman Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Two. Three.
Zero.
Okay, let's start over. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. That failed. Okay. I will look for another motion.
I'll move to award the purchase of sport court flooring for the city campus gym to Continental Flooring in the amount not to exceed 72,717.68 and approve the associated budget transfers.
I got a motion in a second?
A second.
Vice Mayor, second. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your hand. Passed, four to three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Hey, I'll get there eventually. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of a preliminary development plan for Bison Pass, a 16-lot subdivision. Mr. Tregaskis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. At the regular meeting of February 9th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the preliminary development plan for Bison Pass, a 16-lot subdivision submitted by Bison Homes LLC located at 4800 West Joe Tank Road, that being APN 30930001Q. This development is located at the northwest corner of Joe Tank Road and Park Road. The applicant has indicated this subdivision will be for single-family homes with detached garages. Manufactured homes will be prohibited. Each cabin will have a defined building envelope with the remainder of the property being common area. The applicant is committed to provide the city with an assurance for the future improvements to Joe Tank Road. The gross area of the preliminary development plan is approximately 3.63 acres with minimum lot size of 1,815 square feet, an average lot size of 2,345 square feet and maximum lot size of 2,478 square feet. Track A consists of 0.36 acres of private drive. The width of the drive will be a total of 30 feet to back of curb, which is similar to the Retreat Villas at Bison Crossing located off of West Old London Road. Track B includes 974 square feet for a public sewer lift station. Track C provides 3.04 acres for private parking, utilities, drainage and open space. The proposed development is zoned, planned unit development or PUD, and is part of the Bison Ridge development. This portion of the Bison Ridge master plan is identified as commercial on the master plan. According to the Bison Ridge project narrative, the resort and commercial PUD areas of the Bison Ridge master plan shall allow all residential and C2 or general commercial uses. Staff has reviewed the submitted preliminary development plan and found that it has met all requirements of the city code. Subject property shall meet all underlying zoning requirements of the PUD zoning. Condition nine of ordinance number 509 states, quote, "A 30-foot height restriction shall apply to residential development areas along the ridge line and a 30-foot setback shall be required on the northwest side of Joe Tank Road." Ordinance number 509 has been included for review. I'll now go over the commission decision. There were seven conditions of approval. Number one, all development shall comply with all applicable federal, state and local requirements. Number two, public sewer and water lines within the development shall have dedicated public easements. Number three, drainage ways, including basins and culverts, shall be designated as private drainage easement. Number four, as required by ordinance number 509, a 30-foot height restriction shall apply to residential development areas along the ridge line and a 30-foot setback shall be required along Joe Tank Road. Number five, the applicant shall provide an assurance acceptable to the city for future improvements to Joe Tank Road. Number six, an in lieu fee may be substituted for any required sidewalks or trails. And seven, all development of Bison Pass at Bison Ridge shall be in substantial conformance to the submitted preliminary development plan, deed restrictions and the Bison Ridge master plan. With that, staff as well as the applicant are available.
Anybody have any questions? Vice Mayor.
I see that the applicant is providing assurances unacceptable, assurance acceptable to the city for future improvements to Joe Tank Road. Does that meet all of the paving standards of the city limits?
Yes, it would. So the, the assurances for Joe Tank Road would cover all required improvements to Joe Tank in order to bring that up to city standard.
And explain to me the in lieu fee substituted in, in lieu of the sidewalks or the trails that are required by.
Certainly. So sidewalks would, would generally be required along the frontage of Joe Tank Road. In this case, the concern would be that that's essentially a sidewalk to nowhere. It would not connect to any sidewalks on Park Road and it wouldn't connect to any sidewalks or trails going further down Joe Tank Road. Rather than just put in a trail or sidewalk, it really serves no purpose. An in lieu fee can be substituted. That then would be used at some other location within the city where sidewalk or trail would be more practical.
Okay, so at such time as the development around there comes to fruition, then the city would be responsible for putting in those improvement? comes to fruition, then the city would be responsible for putting in those improvements?
If, if in the future it was deemed necessary to put a sidewalk or a trail along Joe Tank Road, yeah, the city would then be the one that would put that in at, at that point.
So if, in, in Luffy, if that goes somewhere else, do you bring that back to council? Or the city, if you're going to put it somewhere else in town, does that come back to council or no?
It usually just becomes part of kind of the budget that we use when we're doing sidewalks and trails. It's certainly something that, you know, could be mentioned as a funding source. You know, as we're doing a new sidewalk or a new trail somewhere in the city, you know, the funding may be identified as we're utilizing the in lieu fee that came from this Bison Pass develop.
I kind of like that idea because I know we've done it in the past. It's just nice to know where it came. Councilman also.
To go back to the Vice Mayor's question, on the, on Joe Tank Road for the improvements on Joe Tank Road, where, where would it start and where would it end?
So typically, the developer would be responsible from end to end of his project where he abuts Joe Tank Road. So at the intersection of Joe Tank and Clark Road, proceeding southwest to the end of his property, that's where he would be responsible for constructing the road. In this case, he's providing an assurance for that construction to city standards. We're in the process, we have what's called a flat grant that we're applying for. We've actually applied for, it's been awarded. And that would take care of not only this portion of Joe Tank Road, but an additional portion of Joe Tank Road. The concern is that if the developer jumps in right now and puts the road in, that that could jeopardize the remainder of the construction on Joe Tank Road under the grant. So we're, we're recommending that the council require the assurance so that if something happens to the grant, we don't know until you actually get the check. We don't know that, that, that it's gone through, that that road, that portion of that road will be constructed, whether it's through the grant or whether it's through the assurance provided by the developer. Regardless of what happens with the grant, that portion of Joe Tank Road at least will be constructed.
So the insurance is just covering from the side of that red line, but nothing all the way up to the other end of the Bison, whatever the subdivision is on the south side of Joe Tank Road, is that correct?
Correct, it's just what you see outlined there in red.
So then the, the grant that you're going after will take from the end of that red line, the joint, the corner there all the way to past the original subdivision that's on the south side?
So the, the grant that has been awarded, we've already received notification that we, we've been awarded the grant. Again, it's one of those things that has to work through the federal government process, so it takes a little bit of time. We have received notice that we've been awarded for approximately one-third of a mile, Joe Tank Road, which is about where the cattle guard is, if you're familiar with the area. We've also worked with Forest Service, Shane Hemsaw, with our Public Works Department, our city engineer, well as Lisa Robertson, who's our grants coordinator, has worked with Forest Service. We think we may be able to get an additional one-third of a mile, so a total of two-thirds of a mile to get us about to the trailhead. But again, we actually see the check. We don't know that, that that's a hundred percent.
No, you know, and I'm concerned about that, Joe Tank Road, because if you haven't drove down that thing for a while, I don't know if you can miss a pothole or not.
You can.
It's, it's very tough.
You gotta pay attention.
Anyway, all right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilman Clark.
Yeah, Mr. Tergaskis, how many, with this sixteen-unit portion phase, how, how is that in relation to their overall density? Are they getting close to that at all right now? Or, and, and also for their open space requirements and stuff under the PUD zoning?
So for total unit count, under the PUD, they're allowed a total of four hundred and one units. I apologize, I don't have the specific number in front of me. Come on, maybe I do. Nope, I don't, I'm sorry. But they're about three hundred and forty with this sixteen units. So they're, they're well under the four hundred and one. Open space, because of the way that they're running the track on this, has an open space common area. Again, they're well under their density requirements. They meet the open space requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Martenson? You got anything for him?
Councilman also. Are we, can we talk to the applicant then? Because really, I just have a one really just easy question.
Come on up.
I know he can answer and he's going to smile at, he's going to laugh at, I guarantee you.
He's uncomfortable.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, Mr. Mutter. My name is Gary Martenson. I recently moved into my, my new home at Seven North Bison Preserve Way, Sholo. And it's been, I want to, just to make a little comment about this particular site. Obviously, we purchased it as part of the Bison Ridge purchase twenty-seven years ago. And it's about time that something happens to this. This property has been in escrow a few different times and fallen out. And certainly Joe Tank is probably the main reason why nobody wants to develop, develop this site. But we are moving forward to this thing. And I kind of decided that, you know, with the size of the project, you know, I've never had the, the privilege, you know, to, to go through this process, take this kind of risk over the last ten years. So I thought maybe now's the time to do it before old age sets in, so away we go. So now with that question, Mr. Also.
Well, you know, we got this, all this information last week on Friday and I was driving down the highway and I seen a for sale sign that says three point six three acres with your name on it. So I'm pretty sure you're going to be taking down the for sale sign now and, and doing your subdivision, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, thanks for letting me come up here.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I just, I figured you need to just a little exercise.
Any other questions?
I was trying to think of a question that I can embarrass you with, but I can't. But you said something about old age before it sets in.
Well, fortunately, fortunately, I will be back for the final plat, so thank you.
All right, no other questions?
Thank you.
I'll move to approve preliminary development plan for Bison Pass, a sixteen-lot subdivision subject to the conditions of approval specified by planning and zoning. Second. Councilman Adams, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those not opposed, say no. Hey, didn't need the hand that time. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Tergaskis. Mr. Martenson, sorry we kept you up past your bedtime, but thank you. All right, moving right along. Uh, where am I at here? Summary of current events, I believe. Let me make sure, yeah, summary of current events. Council. Current events. Councilman also.
Thank you. Just let everybody know that Meals and Wheels are still delivering meals and everything in this pandemic and, and want to help anybody and everybody out that they can. I just went by there today and, and somebody must have volunteered to deliver because there was fingerprints and, and a driver's license out there. So if you're willing to help Meals and Wheels to deliver food or to help them out anywhere at the office or anything else, please give them a call at nine two eight, five three two, oh six five six, and let them know that you would like to help them. And the, the last thing is I would like to give out a big, big, big thanks to the Public Works Department for the hours they spent these last couple of weeks with the snowstorms coming in and they did one hell of a job. So that's it.
Thank you. Any other councilmen? Just real quick, I'll report on a couple of things we got coming up. But we're, we're still moving forward on our barbecue event. We, we don't know what's going to happen here in the next few months, but we just kind of figured we better start moving forward in case we, we get through this COVID and we get to have our event. So pretty excited to start planning something that we haven't planned in a couple of years. It seems like a couple of years. So it's, it's pretty exciting on my end for sure. No other, Councilman Adams.
I had a chance to go down and museum and to meet, to go down there and talk about things, getting things ready to go. Hopefully they come up this year. I know there's a lot, a lot of new people moving to our mountain. And I tell them, they'd like to get to know a little bit about us. Go to the museum, really neat, got some neat stuff there and find out a little bit about us, what we're about, our history and, and what Shola was like in the early days. So hope that gets open and hope people get a chance to do that.
Thank you. I, I did get to read their report. It's a pretty nice report. They're doing a good job for, for what's going on there, for sure. Absolutely. Anybody else need seconds? If not, we'll turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to report. The Recreation Department's accepting registrations for the soft, spring one pitch softball through March first. And you want more information on that, you can call five three two, forty one thirty. And, and the Public Works Projects Contractors continues working on the water line, water crossing, waterline crossing projects on Dusa Clubs. They're continuing work on West Cooley Phase Two between, on West Cooley and between Sixth and Eighth Avenues. And also working on the fence in the metal along White Mountain Road as weather permits. Again, we thank citizens for their patience as we improve the city's infrastructure and adding on to what Councilman also said, we want to thank our Public Works crews and the Public Safety Department for all they did during these recent storms. They did a great job and just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. Anybody else? Scheduling of meetings. We have a few coming up, but we're just not ready right now. Well, if not, I'll, we need to go into executive session. So I'll let everybody know that we're going to recess this meeting and go into executive session to discuss. What are we going to discuss?
I'll move that we go into executive session.
One second. Consolation of legal advice with our attorney. Also discussion of consideration of requisite exempt by law. Now I can take that motion.
I'll move that we go into executive session.
Got a motion in a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.